The recording and I'm gonna start the broadcast. And the other people from, uh, from Tall Woods will be able to get in now. The other attendees, we're all set, it's up, your meeting is yours, sir.
Okay, uh, good evening, welcome everybody, uh, like you have a roll call by the clerk please?
Kerry McGee?
Yeah.
Greg LaBorsonea?
Here.
Deborah Bacon?
Gary Cody?
Here.
Ann Dixon?
Here.
Okay, the next item is, would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Thank you. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda besides the fact that this could be an extreme live, uh, extreme live, uh, is, uh, the president's comments. I really don't have a lot of comments except to know that, uh, I want to thank the staff at Town Hall for keeping the planning as efficiently as we can. And, uh, also, uh, just let the people know that we have been active reviewing for, uh, town manager positions. And, uh, it's still a round and round process, but I, I think within the next couple of weeks, we should do a lot more. So, uh, with that being said, I, uh, I think we, the next item would be, uh, district update from District One. Councilwoman Dixon requested an opportunity to speak. Hello, it's Councilwoman Dixon.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, and to my fellow council members. Uh, this is an update on the issues that our residents in District One are facing. Members of the council are receiving regular emails from two residents on Route 102 about wind turbine noise and flicker issues. There are eight turbines in that area and two others off Route 117. Background, we have Article 20 Wind Energy Facilities Ordinance that has standards relating to flicker inside the home, but not outside. A notice of violation was issued by the town on June 22nd, 2018 for Wed Coventry 2, 5, and 6. Included in Article 20, section, I think, 2062, content on turbine noise. These two ordinances, I need a revision, however, even if these ordinances are updated, it is doubtful they can be retroactive. But it is useful and worth our time to listen to a bunch of two emails that all of us received. This is from a June 5th email from one of the residents. "We don't even open the windows on the backside of our house anymore because the wind turbines are too noisy at night. As a result, our bedroom isn't well ventilated with only the windows on the front of the house open. It's getting so hot that we have to run the AC, which costs us, costs us more on our electric bill every month. So in addition to the noise, the wind turbines are costing us money as well. We would have turned on the AC this early in the year." That's from one particular resident who has sent us emails repeatedly. Here's another resident who sent us an email that was dated June 5th at 2:34 a.m. in the morning. "Another sleepless night because of the wind turbines sounding like a rushing waterfall with a percussion so strong against my house. The feeling of the waterfall is called low-frequency vibration, extremely loud, and affects the heart rate because there's multiple turbines spinning, creating the force. We would not get this feeling if the turbines were sighted properly. I believe this might be the case today on a hot June day. I had to open some windows, which we cannot do since the turbines were erected because of these jet-sounding industrial machines. Our after our day, after day living inside this cuckoo clock with these monsters spinning." So those are two typical emails that we have been receiving. Um, "I understand that we are engaged in extensive costly legal cases, but I do believe that a meeting with residents to provide an update, no matter how short, is in order. I know we'd be very limited in what we may be able to say because of the court proceedings we are engaged in, but the residents really would like some information so that they can understand what the path or journey is toward resolution. Next, I've received emails and or phone calls about the following: drainage issues on Weaver Hill Road, street cleaning on Gibson Hill Road, grass cutting at the Hopkins Hollow Cemetery, which has a perpetual care contract with the town, and the rights-of-way infringement on Lake property. In each case, I notified the manager with a copy to our DPW Director of the issue. The response of the town was very, very quick, and I do want to applaud how quickly our manager and our department heads are responding to these issues that we are be, that are being raised by our, uh, being raised by our voters. In the case of the drainage issue, Mr. McGee went to the site once and then twice met with residents and offered a resolution to the problem if money frees up in his budget. For street cleaning, there is street cleaning according to a schedule, but residents would like more done and to see the work. In the case of the cemetery, the grass was not cut before Memorial Day as per the perpetual care contract. Our contract with the lawn service starts the end of May. The grass has now been cut. In each case, the residents cited a real problem. The town responded, however, the town has limited funds to provide the service the residents expect. Department budgets are frozen for this fiscal year. In the case of the infringement of rights-of-way, we are working with legal counsel to resolve the issues. Some voters are telling their council members they want a zero increase to the municipal budget. Residents need to understand and accept that a zero means that there will be a reduction and/or limited services or delays in providing services. And if services provided for one activity, some other activities may be affected, and this is what happens when there are limited resources. Likewise, residents will have to understand that a zero for the school budget will impact the delivery of services. That's what happens when there are limited resources. As a town council member, I do understand that we are responsible for making sure that we employ fiscally responsible policies and directives. We are responsible for running an efficient and effective government, so we have a responsibility for due diligence to cut expenses that free up money for other needs, and I am pledged to do that. But our residents do have real concerns, but there needs to be a balance between our ability to provide the service and meet their expectations and what we can fiscally do. Voters who are hearing this message about the issues in my district, and I'm sure there are like issues in other districts, voters who are hearing this mission, message, please contact your council member and voice your opinion about the budget that is before us on June 22nd, 2020. Thank you, Mr. President, for putting this item on the agenda, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
You're very welcome, and thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. The next item on the agenda would be A5. Madam Clerk, would you please, please?
Approval of Town Council Minutes, May 15th, 2020.
Okay, we've all received them in our packets. I guess the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any comments or questions? See you in, um, Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Kerry McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBorsonea?
Yes.
Deborah Bacon?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, the next item on the agenda would be B1. Madam Clerk?
For consideration and action of proposed zoning ordinance amendment to change the zoning classification of the Town Hall Annex, Plat 59, Lot 13, located at 1675 Flat River Road, Coventry, Rhode Island, from a RR2 rural residential, two acres designated to I-1 Industrial.
Okay, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, we've been using this quite a while and want to get it in accordance with, uh, zoning, uh, rules and regulations. So, Mr. LaBorsonea, did you have any comments or anything that you want to say about that before we?
I don't recall the date of the public hearing. Uh, I would assume, uh, I would guess our clerk will have that date. Well, we completed the public hearing. Uh, the council at that time withheld voting on this, predicated on, uh, a check by myself, and it turned out, Mr., uh, Council President McGee also came over and met me at, uh, 5 o'clock in the morning to go check out and listen to and see about the, the claims of a lot of noise over there when these buses were starting up. Uh, the two days that I was there, uh, I sat one day directly in front of the driveway, and the second day I sat directly in front of the house of one of the potties who had made the comment. I had 15 buses that backed up on the first day, 17 backed up on the second day, and using my personal handheld, uh, decibel meter, I had a 53 rating, average rating on the one over by his house, which is basically normal speaking volume. Uh, there was very little noise, I didn't find that much. Uh, Mr. McGee, I don't know what your, what your evaluation of it was, but I thought it was very minor and, uh, very limited in scope over the course of three hours, because the buses rolled out of there all the way up until 8 o'clock in the morning. So there was 15 and 17 were spread out quite a bit over the three-hour range.
And I was there also for an hour, and, uh, I mean, you did hear some of the backup alarms, but it was nothing unusual, nothing loud. Uh, I thought I was expected to be a lot worse by the way it was described at the meeting, but it really wasn't. So, I mean, uh, in my eyes, it was, it was fine, it was nothing out of the norm. So, uh, I will give, uh, each, uh, council person an opportunity to ask any questions, any comments concerning this matter. Just keep in mind, if the question should be, this is to change the ordinance, this has nothing to do with what future might be done on that property or a whole other issue. Right now, this is just to change the ordinance, make it compliant, we can park our buses there, lifting off, we've been doing for the last several years. So, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Council Vice President LaBorsonea. Do you have any comments or any questions?
Uh, the only comments I have is that the only, uh, concerns really were at the public, uh, the public hearing. Uh, it is in District 2, uh, and I haven't heard anything negative from, uh, from anybody other than, uh, you know, uh, what was stated at the public hearing. And, uh, and again, if, uh, with the, uh, with the decibel levels being, uh, you know, at speaking and below time, uh, I, I don't, uh, you know, I, I don't think that's, uh, is a major concern, and I support the pass zoning change.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaBorsonea. I'll move on to Councilwoman Dixon, do you have any comments, any questions?
Um, yes, I do, thank you. Um, I do appreciate that we received a list of the 200-foot abutter list, and I think that that was a very valuable, very valuable addition to our package, so I was happy to see that. Uh, when I looked at the abutters list and I looked at the map, I noticed that we are within 200 feet, that it completely eliminates the notification to some of the people who live in that development there. So, based on our current rules and regulations, et cetera, um, I am supportive of this change, but I would like to ask Mr. Crossman if he would just look at the, the ordinance that says 200 feet, and maybe for the future, we might want to change the, the number of feet so that it would be more inclusive of some other, the other property owners near a, uh, zone that's going to be changed. That's all I have to say, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, the next, uh, person will be Councilwoman Cody, do you have any concerns, any questions, comments?
Well, I think my only comment about it is, is that, um, although I fully support the zoning change, I want the council to be mindful of the fact that we have an industrial park over off of Airport Road, and we're holding the companies in that industrial park to a different standard as far as hours of operation for construction equipment as well as their trucks. Um, and that, I don't know about anymore, but when the company that I currently work for was in that industrial park, the RPD was asked to respond there on numerous occasions because of trucks running and backup alarms on construction equipment. And Kerry, you operate heavy equipment, they, they make as little noise when they're running as a school bus does with a diesel engine in it. Uh, both engines are basically the same. It was for the backup alarm. So, although I support this change, I want the council to be mindful of the fact that we have an industrial zone in the town, which we're holding to a different standard, and I, and I don't know where that falls into line with us trying to create continuity throughout town. Um, but I do support the change, and I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak about it, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Cody, thank you, point taken. Uh, Councilwoman Bacon, you have questions, concerns concerning, uh, item on the agenda?
Yes, I do, I brought it up before. Um, I would like to amend this, uh, ordinance change just so that when the town or school no longer own the property, that that would revert back to RR2, that it would no longer be I-1. And I would like the council to consider that and amend this ordinance and possibly put something in that it would revert back to RR2.
Well, I'll be honest with you, uh, Councilwoman Bacon, I don't see us ever sell, that if anything in the future, I'd see our town hall moving to the end, which we'd love to eventually do, but, uh, I mean, I personally don't see a need to that, I don't know what the, what the other council members feel, but I, I really don't see a need to change it back, because I don't see the town, of course, we don't know what's gonna happen in 10, 15 years.
And that's exactly it, I mean, we don't know, so that's why with consideration with those neighbors, I mean, we have had issues when we start doing this and you put I-1 in a residential neighborhood, you're going to start having issues. So I just want to go and prevent that. Um, these people bought their homes knowing that this was RR2 and not Industrial 1. So I, I would really, um, be very comfortable if we could have a clause in there, and especially on the deed, that this would revert back to RR2 once the town and/or school no longer owns the property. Um, so I ask that, we, we amend that tonight.
Yeah, let me ask, uh, Mr. Crossman, are there any concerns, any, uh, anything, uh, you heard the, uh, the request from council? Uh, Mr. Crossman, do you have any concerns or you feel a need?
Right.
You're on mute. You're on mute. Take the mute off.
Thank you, all set, I apologize. No, I don't have any problems, um, with that stipulation, actually. Uh, but I, I would defer to Nick because I think it's going to be a legal issue, but, um, the planning department would not have any issues, um, if the council saw fit to put that stipulation forward.
Okay, Mr. Go, um, as a solicitor, do you have any comments, concerns, or will we run into any legal problems with that?
The proposed amendment is proper. In other words, it's allowable. It does, um, the only thing I would add, um, it doesn't have to be in the deed. Um, you can condition a zone change on something like this. Um, but if Member Bacon, uh, and the council agree it should be in the deed to the property, that can be changed as well.
Yeah, this way, nothing.
But this is, this is on the zoning amendment, so we really can't get into the deed tonight anyway.
Okay.
But on the zoning amendment, her request is proper.
Okay, I mean, we want to, a motion, if nobody else has any question on, if you want to make a motion without?
I think Greg, I think Greg wants to say something.
I have a question.
It's on the screen, so I apologize for that.
Oh, sorry.
I've got a question.
Okay, absolutely.
Is putting something like that into the, into the zoning change, can, you know, are, are we, uh, able to, uh, to hold a future council to, to something? Let's say a future council comes in and, you know, decides to make the change and, and not put it to RR2, does it really make? You want me to answer that? A succeeding council could remove it, that's true. I mean, the council, but, but, I mean, if you don't put it in, it will never happen. And I think that's, uh, Councilwoman Bacon's point, is that she wants to put it in. Uh, yes, of course, a succeeding council can change it, but, um, if they don't, then it will, um, it will remain effective. It's, it's up to the council. It's a proper request.
All right, Mr. LaBorsonea, you get your questions answered?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I don't have any problem with that. To me, I just thought it may be running, uh, uh, in, uh, contrary to holding, like I said, another, a future council, uh, that they could certainly make the change anyway. But, uh, in other words, to, uh, if, uh, I, I have no problem with, with that amendment if, uh, if it, everything else remains the same. Uh, it's changing the zoning to, uh, for the town to adhere to what we've actually been practicing, uh, on that property to begin with.
Okay, okay, no problem, appreciate that. Mr. Solicitor, I hope I understand, if we don't put it in now, it never will. The council, a future council, could not add this in in the future, could not change anything they wanted?
That's a good question. Um, I suppose since it is the town, they probably could. But, I mean, I've been asked the question in the present, um, it's appropriate to make an amendment as part of the zoning amendment process, and it's, um, it's a condition that is allowable under law. That's all I was asked to answer, and that's all I'm saying.
Okay, uh, yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem, like, Mr. Cody, you have a question?
I don't have a question, uh, Mr. President. I was just going to say, out of consideration for Councilwoman Bacon, Bacon's concerns, I would like to, um, propose a resolution that we change the ordinance to state that upon transfer of that property to any other entity other than the school department or the Town of Coventry, that it would be changed back.
Are you making that motion?
I am.
Okay, we have that motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
I'll make the second.
Sorry, Greg, Greg has it, it's his district.
Greg, we have a second, okay, you have it. All in favor, Madam Clerk, would you take the roll call?
Mr. President, I'd like to speak.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
I'm okay with the amendment that we put in that, um, it could change it back. Um, however, I don't want to hold a future council responsible or the town responsible to change any kind of deed, et cetera. Uh, the council at any time can change with a public hearing and discussion, a zoning. It can go from RR2 to I and I, back to RR2, et cetera. I'm okay with in that stipulation that was originally suggested by Councilwoman Bacon, but not putting anything into any kind of deed.
Okay.
Yeah, that wasn't, Nick said we couldn't do that tonight anyway, Ann.
Based, based, based on the amendment, um, I would like to hear the clerk exactly the amendment that we're going to vote on.
Okay, and I'll make a comment too, is, uh, I, I have no problem, I just don't see the need, I really don't. I think, because in the future, council could do anything they want to do as far as change, just don't see the need for the amendment. So, but, Madam Clerk, uh, do you understand the amendment, or could you read it, including the amendment that Mr. Cody stated?
I want to hear it read, so we all know what we're voting for. I don't have the full wording that Member Cody had spoke.
All right, I have the, we all have amendment in the, in front of us.
I can read it, I can read it.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I, uh, let me just say that I took a little bit of poetic license with Member Cody's proposal, just to make it, um, a little more, um, direct and, um, uh, legal sounding, I guess you'd say. So what I said is, this, this zone change shall remain effective until revoked or until, uh, the town or school department shall divest themselves of the property.
Okay, I mean, uh, we have the, uh, Councilwoman Dixon, we have the resolution, you, you upload that addition.
Comfortable with the divest itself of the property because, um, someone who might come in and want to purchase the property, and they might consider they're gonna buy it because it is zoned industrial. I don't feel that we should put a stipulation on someone who might want to buy the property. We don't do that with any other piece of property. I'm completely in agreement that we can make an amendment that we put in some kind of time limit or something like that, but the, uh, the, uh, of the property is a problem.
Yeah, I don't think, um, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me, let me read the entire, uh, because what Gary actually said is it would revert to RR2, I believe, that's what Member Cody said. Let me just, uh, all right, let me read it now. "This zone change shall remain effective until revoked or until the town or school department shall divest themselves of the property, at which time the property shall revert to the RR2 zoning designation."
Okay, let me ask, uh, Mr. Cody, was that the amendment wording?
That, Mr. President, that's exactly the amendment, and to put, uh, Mrs. Dixon's concerns, I think, to rest, um, under Rhode Island general law of full disclosure, when a piece of real estate is transferred from one owner to the other, the real estate agent and/or the seller has to diverse, has to right up front tell everybody the exact specifications of the property before the sale is final.
Okay, so now we've, we've read the resolution and we've read the amendment. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call vote?
Kerry McGee? Greg LaBorsonea?
Yes.
Deborah Bacon?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
You're on mute, Gary. Gary, you're on mute.
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Okay, motion carries to me too. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, item B2. Madam Clerk, would you read it, please?
Awarding contract for independent audit services.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, I believe, uh, Mr. Annett, if I'd be the one, uh, well, Mr. Manager, do you want to refer it to Mr. Annett?
I'm gonna refer this to Mr. Annett, he's done most of the work on it because it's his, out of his area that he needs to.
Okay, we have had a chance, we do have copies in our package, if we looked it over, it was extensive, uh, would you mind giving us some explanation?
Sure, we'd be happy to. Um, so the process originates with the Attorney General or the Auditor General's office, in which case they provide us a, uh, a rating sheet, which takes into account the, um, cost of each one of their proposals. So we put in the cost of proposals, and that is taken effectively out of our hands as far as, uh, a waiting concern. The waiting goes by ability to perform the audit and then also with the professional staff. So that's where the rating is, is come from. Uh, there's myself, Sarah Mangia-Rali from the schools, and then Lori Robitaille, we conducted, uh, we independently rated themselves, and then I just compiled the numbers and then came out with the top score. I chose Lori to help out because of the fact that she has longstanding knowledge in town, has been to do a significant amount of audits in the town. I thought it was appropriate to use her as, as our third reviewer. Um, so essentially, Bloom Shapiro came out on top, uh, which was really interesting, so a lot of the other, uh, every reviewer waited every, uh, proposal slightly differently, but which was really interesting to note was that Bloom Shapiro was pretty much number one or number two across the board with this, at the exact same score for all, um, reviewers. So they came out on top of it, and it appears from what I'm looking through, uh, that the reason why they were given that higher ranking overall was the total number of CPAs that will be provided on-site as part of the audit process. So, the total number of auditors, I believe, is five, that they will be attributing to here plus another staff member. Um, I believe that was the number. Um, just by the sheer dollar amount that you're paying, yes, it's a couple thousand dollars more per year, but you're getting a significant amount of CPAs associated with the job. I found that, personally speaking, when I was doing my review, I found that to be, uh, pretty important considering the significant challenges that I think that this fiscal, that this audit would come across, considering what happened with the, uh, ransomware, uh, in 19. So, I thought it would behoove us to grab somebody with a significant amount of CPAs to come in on-site. Uh, furthermore, when looking back in the past, I, I also liked the ability, personally speaking, again, from my review, was that they are as much of a third party as possible. I'm not seeing in the past that they had conducted an audit here, so I'm really looking forward to them coming in, a third party that doesn't have much background in Coventry, per se, but significant experience across the state of Rhode Island and significant, uh, uh, ability to pull in extra help if needed. Uh, it's, it's gonna be important that they pull apart our books and really look at them, and I really like the fact that, that they could pull in additional help. That was really the process, and it was reviewed as well, again, at, by the Auditor General. They approved it, and then that's what you have.
Our, our current vendor, who was also the low bidder on this, has been our current vendor for a number of years.
Almost a decade.
Almost a decade. It was, it's definitely time that we.
Almost a decade. It was, it's definitely time that we change that vendor. So yes, it is a couple, it is a couple thousand more than what they were, but fresh eyes on the whole process in, in ripping it apart, which is the way they always do it their first year in. I think it's, uh, it's appropriate under this situation to, uh, to have that, to have those new eyes and to have an outsider that hasn't been here before to, uh, to evaluate our books and go through. Things slip through when you're doing it year after year. It's, uh, it's time for, uh, for a new vendor. And not, I'm not knocking who we currently have. They've done a great job. They have done, Paul and his crew have done fantastic job, but it's just, it's time for, uh, for a new one.
And if that's your feelings, John, the same way, I mean, I just want a good, you know, a good audit on it.
Absolutely. Again, I'm not, I, I, I'm not knocking Paul. His, his, he's, his expertise is, is great. He is very, very knowledgeable. Um, again, it's, it's, we, it's just time to move on. We need another third part. We need another look. Another set of eyes is always great when reviewing something. Uh, after a while, you really just start looking at some, at a document and automatically know what it is. Well, it's great for someone to look at that. And coming from previous auditing background, it's great to open up the books as a fresh set of eyes. And I've caught things as a new auditor, that someone who had been done, had been doing the same thing before hadn't seen just because of the fact that it is a fresh start. So I'm really looking forward to seeing this upcoming, uh, audit, not because it's gonna be a lot of work, uh, but it's gonna be good.
Okay, I'd like to give each councilman a personal, uh, going to ask any questions. I thought I would, Vice President LaVosinaire.
Uh, just, uh, a, a couple of things. John, uh, you mentioned a, a review team, uh, that included Sarah. Who, who else was on the review team to?
Lori Robitaille, which is the Deputy Treasurer. She's been in this position for 20 plus years.
And then, uh, you said, uh, uh, was, was Sarah Mangiarelli on that, uh, review squad as well?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just saying, each of you felt, although you rated each of them, and obviously Bloom Shapiro came out on top with the, uh, with, with everybody?
Yeah, so when I was confirming with, uh, when I was talking back and forth with Sarah, her only question was, was, I just could, she wanted to know about the cost wise and she didn't have that. I basically said the exact same thing, which the Auditor General's spreadsheet removed that, uh, takes that into account. So that's, that was basically it.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, they're, uh, they, they, a little bit more on the Bloom Shapiro, but it, it, over three years, it's not, uh, and, and it is a three-year, uh, agreement. I thought I saw that, uh, originally we, we, uh, it was one with a couple of renewals.
So it's a three, so the way that the contracts work and just with the Auditor General, it's a three-year period that you're, you're, uh, going for approval for. Uh, so it allows us to every single year auto renew essentially, uh, in the event that during the year that we find the information to be, uh, inadequate or not correct, it gives us the ability to, uh, remove ourselves from that vent from Bloom Shapiro. And if the information is incorrect, that the, the cost of the services will be in the mix.
Great, thank you. Uh, yeah, they're all reputable firms and, uh, I think, uh, thank you for your, uh, for your diligence in that, John, as well as the other, uh, folks involved. That's all I have, President.
Okay, thank you, Councilman LaVosinaire. Uh, Councilwoman Dixon, do you have any comments, any questions?
Um, I read the proposal. It was very professional. Um, I was also interested because they said all of the town will be conducted with three full-time staff members and the engagement partner and all supervisors and staff will be based out of their Cranston, Rhode Island office. So I, I was impressed by the fact that they actually specified that there would be full-time members working on the project and they really are staffed in a local office. So I thought that was excellent. Um, I thought the presentation of the proposal, that the proposal was excellent. See that? I am curious to know how many proposals you did receive, Ms. Annett.
Uh, we received four separate proposals. Uh, Markham, Bloom, Paul Dancero, and another Hague, Shady and Company, Shady and Company. Uh, Hogg, Shady and Company is out of, um, just, I wanna say New Bedford, uh, uh, just out of Southern Massachusetts. They do, they do also, they're also a very good and well-renowned firm as well. No matter which direction we went, we were, you know, we would be in good hands.
I just thought it's, the price seemed a little bit steeper than what we had been paying. Now you get what you're talking about. So I'm, I'm kind of excited to see what a new report would look like and what they might be able to uncover for this. So I'm happy that you're going in that direction and thank you for the work you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Council, uh, excuse me, Councilman Cody, would you have any questions, any concerns concerning this item on the agenda?
Well, I don't have any concern, but what I do wanna state publicly is that I believe that, uh, Dancero has done a good job for us. But, um, I think a decade is a long time to have oversight of a municipality. And, and I welcome a new company coming in and, and rolling up their sleeves and getting their hands dirty and, and running a thorough evaluation. Um, so I think it's going to be good for the town. And, um, I think the added expense is going to be well worth it. Anytime you bring a new company in, you're gonna pay a little bit more money, but I think you can expect a little bit more from them um, as an end result. So I look forward to the change and I look forward to any information that they can bring forward to us.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Cody. Uh, Councilwoman Bacon, do you have any questions, concerns, uh, concerning this item on the agenda?
Two. Uh, John, I just have a question because you broke up. I couldn't hear you. You said there's gonna be five?
Uh, well, it looks like there's five staff members, but it looks like four CPAs. I'm just looking out for CPAs.
Four CPAs, okay. Um, does, will they also be presenting to the town council like our previous auditors? They'll come before council?
Yes, ma'am. They, they'll be doing the exact same engagement as before.
Okay, thank you.
Do well.
Okay, uh, and I feel the same way. It's, I'm fine with you're ready for a change and it's been a decade. I mean, I think I welcome, you know, a new set of eyes also. So with that being said, uh, the chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the proposal to hire, uh, Bloom Associates as our auditors.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second, I would second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Harry McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaVosinaire?
Yes.
Deborah Bacon?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Anne Dixon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
The next item on the agenda, we take a break because there's a public hearing, which is C1, and it is not scheduled. This is a good opportunity for you to, uh, volunteer, to use whatever, uh, great facilities you need to use. And, uh, we'll come back in, uh, let's take five minutes and then we'll come back and possibly, uh, you know, discuss it. We'll talk to this listener, see what we can legally do. I'm gonna take five minutes off, oh, great, okay?
Yeah, why don't, uh, why don't you just, yeah, we're in recess.
Okay, we'll just take a recess and then we'll come back. We won't close the meeting. We'll be back.
Everyone should close down their video. Just, just kill their video and kill their audio. And, and you're, you're, uh, you're muted. I can't hit, nobody can hear you.
But how long are we down?
We need, we need to, we, the meeting, meeting needs to begin at seven o'clock. That's what the, uh, public hearing was posted for.
Do you want us back at seven?
Yeah.
That good?
Fine.
Yeah, seven o'clock. I noticed, um, we have 18 attendees. He's online right now, Mr. Manager. So, um, we just pick up again at seven. We're just in recess and, um.
Yep. I'm gonna work.
I recognize. Some of them I recognize as who are gonna participate in the hearing. So if they're listening, um, they too will know that it's just a recess until we start, uh, the final item agenda.
Yeah, they're, they all can hear this. Carrie, your video feed is still on.
You don't like looking at me?
You don't like looking at me? Okay, I have seven o'clock. We're back from recess. Madam Clerk, the next item on the agenda would be C1, please.
Public hearing for consideration and/or action of proposed zoning ordinance amendment to change the zoning classification of assessors plat 50 lots 11 and 23 located at 17 Tall Woods Drive from its current R20 designation to PD Plan Development, also referred to as a PDU, Planned Unit Development for construction of a 62-unit condominium development.
Okay, Mr. Manager, if you want to take it, or if you want to hand it over to, for an explanation, you want to hand it over to Mr. Crossman, why don't you take it, Mr. Wazika?
Yep, this is, this is an ongoing process. Mr. Crossman is more familiar with this, as the planner, I'm going to allow him to speak from the pool.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crossman, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Very good, thank you. Everybody can hear me now?
Yes.
So what we're at is, we have a project here, it was a major land development that appeared before the planning commission, they received master plan approval, and before they can proceed to their next stage of approval, which is preliminary, they need a zone change from the town council. What they're doing is, they're looking to build, construct 62 condominiums on 47 acres of land. The reason they have to go before the town council is, the way the ordinance reads is, because this is going to be a condominium project, our ordinance reads, you're allowed to put one dwelling unit per lot, and because this project will not have 62 individual lots, because the way a condominium works is, it's all common ownership. They needed approval from the town council to grant them a PUD to allow multiple units on one lot. This is very similar to what the developer did when he had the project known as Rivers Edge on 117. That was also a PUD that appeared before this council, because he wanted to put more than one dwelling unit on one lot as using the condominium avenue for the project. So, again, that's why he is here this evening, he's asking for a zone change from an R20 to a PUD. I, just, one more thing, before I turn it over to their attorney, Mr. Cronin, they're looking for 62 units. As part of the project, they have to prepare what's called a yield plan, and what that yield plan does is, it mimics the zone of, the underlying zone of the neighborhood, being Wood Estates North, it's an R20 zone, it's 20,000 square foot lots. So they submitted a plan that was a conventional subdivision design, and the maximum number of lots they were allowed to construct using the R20 zone and mimicking the budding neighborhoods, they were allowed to construct 62 single-family homes. So that is where they came up with this number for the condominiums, and they wanted to go down another avenue, instead of building single-family homes, they wanted to build the condominiums. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Cronin, so he can explain the exact particulars of the project, if that's okay with the, Mr. President.
Ron.
You're on mute, Carrie.
Yes, it is, very fine, Mr. Cronin, you can go ahead. Mr. Cronin, are you there?
Sorry, Mr. President, it took me a moment to unmute.
Okay, thank you.
So, all new to all of us, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I will, I'll try to speak more slowly than my usual manner, so that I don't break up, but if my pace is not working, let me know. So, Tall Woods is a piece of property on plat 50 lots 11 and 23, it's 46 acres, it's mostly woodland right now, there is one structure on the northeast corner of the property, it's a prime piece of property, it has 1,500 feet of linear shoreline along Johnson's Pond. It has Flat River Reservoir, Johnson's Pond to the north of the parcel, Reservoir Road to the east, Sharon Drive to the west, and Regalwood Drive and the rest of Wood Estates North to the south. Obviously, the predominant use in this area is single-family homes. The, the proposal is for 62 detached two-bedroom condominiums, public water, private septic systems, OWTS, there'll be a private interior circular drive maintained by the association, all of the typical condominium attributes will be present here, they'll take care of their own trash, they'll take care of their own snow plowing, landscaping, drainage, recycling, things that you've dealt with in the past and you're all familiar with. The entrance to the proposed condominium is at the intersection of Regalwood and Orchard Trail in the Wood Estates North neighborhood. In addition to that main entrance, there's a secondary emergency access to be paved along Tall Woods out to, out for emergency purposes or secondary purposes. The condominium plan has been chosen over the, the single-family plan that Mr. Crossman spoke of. The yield plan, as he referred to it, would allow for 62 single-family homes on 20,000-acre lots, three-to-four-bedroom homes, similar to what you'd find in Wood Estates North, and developed in conformance with the zoning ordinance, in other words, not requiring any kind of variances or requests for relief. The condo plan has a couple of predominant attributes which we think would make it a better fit for the neighborhood, is, the condominium plan allows for 23 acres of undeveloped land. So rather than being built out to the edges of the property, there's 23 acres surrounding the condominium homes, which will remain wooded for the most part, but not, and not be part of the structures. That same 23 acres also allows for a significantly greater buffer to the existing homes on Regalwood Drive and the other neighborhoods I mentioned. The, the amount of distances from home to home is greater under the condominium plan. The, the condominiums are also proposed to be two-bedroom as opposed to the three- or four-bedroom homes, and the feeling is that this will reduce the total number of residents, so that there'll be less impact, fewer residents in the area, you know, for all the services that the town provides. As Mr. Crossman mentioned, we have appeared before planning for a public hearing, and for master plan and recommendation to the council to change the zone, and we did receive that recommendation. The, after this meeting, as Mr. Crossman mentioned, we'll be going back to preliminary, hopefully, preliminary plan before the planning board with engineered plans, drainage around Department of Environmental Management permits, Kent County Water Authority approvals, Fire Department approvals, those things will be handled before the planning board at the preliminary plan hearing. Before this meeting, we have submitted reports with the site design from Commonwealth Engineers, traffic impact study from Beta Group, and a fiscal impact study from Mr. Lombardo. Those gentlemen are here with me tonight, as, as well as the member, members of Tall Woods, I'll see Mr. Asseline. The traffic report required by the planning department chose a morning peak of 29 trips over several hours in, in the morning for new traffic in the area, and 35 trips over several hours in the afternoon for new traffic in the area. The traffic engineer makes a finding that the level of service will not be increased by this use, and that the minor traffic will have no discernible effect on the traffic flow in the area. The, Mr. Lombardo has issued a report that in summary says that the condominium plan will result in $273,460 in increased annualized net revenue as opposed to the 62 single-family homes. So, with the Chair, Mr. President's permission, I would like to begin by having Mr. Behan describe the design of the project, is that acceptable to the President?
You're muted, Carrie.
To me, yes.
Mr. Wazika, would, would you allow Mr. Behan into the meeting?
He isn't.
Mr. Behan, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Tom.
Okay, Mr. Behan, so briefly describe your qualifications and involvement in this project to the council, please.
My name is Timothy Behan, I'm a professional engineer with the firm Commonwealth Engineers in Providence, Rhode Island. I've been an engineer since 1988, when I graduated URI, and I also have a master's degree in civil engineering, 1992, from URI.
What kind of services have you performed with regard to this Tall Woods project?
We're the civil engineers, so we're preparing the, the plans that...
Mr. Behan, are you there?
No, I think I just, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, sorry about that, looked like I had a bad connection. We prepare the plans that go in front of the planning boards, we also prepare the permits for Kent County Water, the DM permits for wetlands, and the Rippeys permits, and anything associated with civil engineering.
Okay, Mr. Wazika, would you please put up the condominium plan for Mr. Behan to describe to the council?
Is that the master plan?
Yes.
Is that the correct one, sir?
It is. Mr. Behan, would you walk the council through your design?
Yes, I'm just noticing I got a blank screen, can you see my face?
I cannot.
Ah, hold on one second. Do I hit the button, start video?
Yes.
All right, sorry about that, there I am, sorry, I didn't catch it until right then. This is the proposed site plan, as you can see, the green area is the subject site, and the green represents the trees that will remain after the site is constructed, so that's the so-called buffer around the property line, and... And uh, let's describe the uh, access. The access point is coming off Regalwood Drive, a single accessway leading into a large loop area for circulation. And the emergency accessway is uh, connecting the Loop Road to Tall Woods Drive, off to the right there. Correct. We have sixty-two uh, units spread out through the site. Each unit is a single family. These are not duplex units. So one building has one unit inside. The subject site's gonna be serviced with uh, public water from Kent County Water. We have septic systems proposed here. That's gonna be reviewed and approved by the Department of Environmental Management. We have uh, proposed drainage system that's gonna be handled on-site. We're gonna have catch basins and pipes in the roadway, which lead to an infiltration system at the lower end of the project for percolation back into the ground. That system will be reviewed and permitted by the Department of Environmental Management. And we also have uh, wetlands the, associated with the reservoir. And a permit needs to go through the Department of Environmental Management for the review uh, with the work associated near the wetlands.
So uh, Mr. Bean, I think it might be helpful to the council if you uh, showed them where the Flat River Reservoir is. So it's not uh, you know, flagged too well on this plan.
Is that something I could do? Can you see this?
It looks like uh, it's to the north. Is that correct?
Correct. That, see the arrow up there? That's the Flat Ri- uh, River Reservoir. We have approximately one thousand five hundred feet of frontage.
Okay. The um, there's a uh, an existing structure on, on the property which is going to remain. Would you please identify that for the council?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
We can see the arrow, by the way, Tim, so that's helpful.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. President, would you like the uh, council members to be uh, able to ask questions of the witnesses as they're presented? Or would you like to hold the questions um, until the end of the presentation?
Well, you can uh, state, we're gonna have to open up a public hearing after all the statements have done, we'll open up. So I, I would say that I will uh, you could get the presentations and then we'll have the council members ask any questions and then we'll open up public hearing, public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. So uh, Mr. Wazika, I would appreciate it if you would allow Mr. Bannon into the meeting.
Hang on one second. I'm gonna put him in as a panelist. Okay. He is in as a panelist.
Mr. Bannon, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. Mr. Bean, I appreciate if you would briefly describe your qualifications and involvement in this project to the council.
I am a uh, associate at Beta Group. Uh, I've been uh, working in uh, the civil engineering uh, profession for the last thirty-five years. Um, working as a traffic and transportation specialist, uh, working for uh, state agencies, including Department of Transportation, working on roadway improvement projects, uh, traffic signal design projects, working for the State Traffic Commission as their uh, consultant, working on dozens of traffic studies over many years, uh, working for local communities um, or road intersection designs, uh, peer reviews, and then uh, working on private development such as this.
What was your involvement in this project, Mr. Bannon?
Uh, we were retained uh, to complete a traffic impact study uh, for the development as part of the local review process.
Okay. Did you, did you complete a review?
Yes, um, we, that was um, submitted to the town um, as part of that uh, master plan hearing process.
Okay. Would you briefly uh, describe the results of your impact study?
Uh, as part of our study, uh, we did a comprehensive analysis of the project area. Um, we conducted a, a review of the, the existing in roadway infrastructure neighborhoods. Uh, and we reviewed the site plan that was provided to us um, by Mr. Behan relative to reviewing the future conditions uh, at the uh, access location. Uh, we conducted numerous site visits various times of the um, day, days of the week to observe traffic operations on the local um, roads within the, the Wood Estates um, residential neighborhood, Reservoir Road, Route Three. Um, I've done a number of projects in this area over my many years, so I'm very familiar with the area. Um, we inventoried the project area for land use, existing roadway conditions, including horizontal and vertical geometry, site distances along the existing roadway network to make sure that there were no uh, safety concerns that would um, need to be addressed to be exasperated as part of uh, additional traffic associated with the project. Uh, we reviewed historical traffic count data that included uh, twenty-four hour counts along Reservoir Ave, um, road and uh, Route Three, and, and we conducted counts at the Route Three intersection with Clubhouse. Uh, we then, that established existing conditions. We then estimated uh, how many um, trips would be associated with this land use. Um, as indicated previously, sixty-two residential condominium units are proposed. Uh, and uh, Mr. Cronin indicated that the number of trips that would be associated with that um, condominium land use, which is uh, relatively low um, and represented during the, the peak hours of traffic. And then we assessed the safety and, and operations of the future conditions uh, to determine uh, if there were any impacts to the local roadway system.
Okay. Did you reach, reach any conclusion on the impact to the local roadway system?
Yes, based on the um, the type of land use and the low volumes um, associated that during the peak hours, uh, there will be no degradation in, in operations at the major intersections uh, in the project area servicing this development and neighborhood.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Bannon, did I get those numbers right when I spoke? A, a morning peak of twenty-nine trips over several hours, is that correct?
That's correct. Uh, during the AM, you would roughly have six vehicles entering uh, the property and twenty-three exiting. Uh, it's for a total of twenty-nine. And during the PM, you would have twenty-three entering and thirteen exiting for a total of thirty-five. Um, that's the worst case or highest volume condition that would be associated uh, with this type of land use.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Uh, Mr. Wazika, uh, may I introduce Mr. Lombardo?
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Cronin?
Yes, Mr. McGee.
Uh, Mr. Wazika, can you bring in Mr. Lombardo? Is that the name?
Yes.
You're on mute, Ed.
He's on screen, Mr. Lombardo.
Hello, Joe.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Mr. Lombardo, uh, please introduce yourself to the, to the council and, and give them a brief overview of your experience.
That's good. Thanks, Tom. Uh, good evening, members of the council. For the record, my name is Joseph Lombardo. I have a home office in Hope Valley, Rhode Island. My background is uh, community planning. I have my bachelor's of science and my master of community planning from the University of Rhode Island. I was the town planner in Westerly, Richmond, and Hockington, as well as a couple of communities in Connecticut. And for the past thirty years, I've been doing land use planning consulting um, for a variety of clients and communities around the state.
Okay. What was your involvement with this project, Mr. Lombardo?
Uh, I was asked to prepare, um, it's actually a, a land development checklist item. It's, it's a fiscal impact study uh, with the dual purposes of estimating uh, population and school-aged children as well as revenues and expenses.
Okay. Can you give the council an overview of your findings of, in the fiscal impact study?
Sure. Uh, again, good evening. Thank you so much for having us on this evening. Um, as Mr. Cronin explained at the very outset in his description, there's actually two parts to the report, one of which is the standard uh, report for the development that's proposed, the sixty-two condominiums. And as Mr. Mr. Crossman explained to you, they also had to prepare a yield plan which showed sixty-two single family homes. So in this instance, I compared the two so the council could have a, an idea what the difference is. Um, and it's can, it's a considerable difference in net revenue of approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars more for the condominium development over the single families. And you could probably understand that that's primarily due to uh, many more school-aged children. They'd be more likely to occupy those single-family homes compared to the condominiums. And I have a lot of data in the back of, end of my report, number of penises that show over the years where I've compiled this data. I have some national statistics and I have some regional studies that also back up that that there's very few school-aged children tend to occupy these two-bedroom condominiums. What I then do is I use municipal budget data and census data to prepare what I call multipliers. So what does it cost per person or per resident in Coventry? What does it cost to educate uh, a student in Coventry? And those, those are prepared again based on, on your budget, current budget data uh, to come up with those numbers. The next part of the report is actually trying to estimate the number of people. As I told you, it's considerably less numbers with two-bedroom condominiums to the point where it's uh, about five school-aged children um, per a hundred units. So in this case, it's really estimated about three school-aged children might occupy this development. Um, so the population for this entire development would be a hundred-and-twenty-seven individuals, including those students. So once I have the number of students and the number of people, I use the multipliers to come up with the cost side of this development. And I estimate that at um, a hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand dollars. And that's all municipal expenses and that's uh, school expenses as well. On the revenue side, we have estimates from the developer on what he would be planning to construct here in an average sales price of a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per unit. Using your current tax rate, that would generate about six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in revenue. So we compare that revenue number of six-hundred-and-twenty with the expenses of one-twenty-four. That actually gives the town a net of over four-hundred-thousand dollars. Um, so that's a, that's a pretty substantial number. It's actually four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand uh, that I would tell you would be a net uh, gross uh, revenue to you that you could use elsewhere in the community. The, the development itself would already pay for itself with that one-twenty-four. And then when we look at the single-family homes, we have a different scenario. Uh, the multiplier is actually uh, sixty students per a hundred units, so it's much higher. Uh, so we estimate that there'd be thirty-seven school-aged children or approximately um, ten or twelve in each uh, middle uh, high school and elementary school that could happen. Um, and it would be a, a more like a hundred-and-sixty-one individuals living here. What um, Mr. Bannon was saying, it'd be a higher, higher density of development having um, the single-family homes. So using a similar sales price of, in this case, four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand per unit, this hypothetical development would generate six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. But when we subtract uh, that much higher um, expense of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, it nets out at two-hundred-thousand dollars. So that's that difference that we explained to you. It's a, it's another two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand above that that the condominium development would provide. So in, in summary, that's, that's really um, you know, in my experience, and I've done, you know, very numerous numbers of these reports and I've got a lot of data in the back of these reports to show you how we come up with those numbers. Children, but I can feel fairly confident to tell you that this is a, a, a net revenue plus uh, to the community of Coventry.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Okay, Tom. Mr. McGee, Mr. President, may I, may I reintroduce Mr. Bean?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Bean, would you please uh, activate your microphone? Mr. Wazika, would you please put up the yield plan? I uh, Mr. President, I was remiss. We have spoken uh, new, virtually all the witnesses have spoken uh, with regard to the yield plan that we designed uh, to show the single-family houses. And uh, I, I neglected to uh, to show the council that plan, and I would like to rectify that at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Bean, would you briefly describe uh, the design of this yield plan uh, to the council?
Uh, yes, this is a, what we call the yield plan. It's the conventional subdivision as per zoning ordinance. There's uh, sixty-two single-family house lots. Each house lot has a minimum area of twenty thousand square feet to meet the underlying zone. And it's a similar nature to what's proposed, except for what you see is, is a lot less trees remaining when it's completed. Because we're maxing out the site here and there's just a few trees along the perimeter and perhaps some trees between houses in the backyards. But essentially, we're gonna need to disturb uh, much of the uh, lot to develop a conventional subdivision. So it's similar nature. You come in off of um, um, what is that?
Regalwood Drive?
Yes, Regalwood Drive with a single entrance. We have a big loop with an interior connector road. And in, in this option, we're just uh, indicating an emergency accessway uh, down towards Reservoir Road. Uh, but once again, there's sixty-two lots and that's, this is the basis for how many lots are entitled in the condominium development.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Mr. McGee, may, may I introduce uh, Mr. Assalon, the member of Tall Woods LLC at this time?
Yes, please do.
Mr. Wazika, would you allow Mr. Assalon into the meeting, please?
Coming in now.
Thank you. John, Tom Cronin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Tom.
Okay. Would you like to make any comments to the council about uh, your approach to this project?
Well, I want you to notice first that I uh, did shave and I haven't got a haircut yet, but uh, I wanna thank everybody for um, taking their time uh, and uh, to, to hear this after the planning boards. This, this is um, this is really kind of a special situation, I think. Uh, similar to other things we've done. But I, I really didn't want to go in to develop this area. A lot of it had to do with, with DEM, because what they were doing. But we still took our time to try and max out the availability of open spaces and no impact regarding town services and no impact regarding children. But yet in, letting allow, still allowing a few children, you know, to reside there. So it'll be a spacious area for people. I think it'll be an economic uh, situation for the community. And, and I, and I hope it's gonna be really special for the neighbors. Um, because if we go conventional, that we're allowed to do, it, it just cuts so much into uh, the, the areas of their backyards and um, more traffic and more roads. So I, I ask your support on this. It's a very special, I think, development uh, for me, for a few purposes uh, on, that I, I wanted to accomplish. And um, and I hope they'll be um, as, as positive as the other communities that, that were brought to you regarding good shelter for people, of good economics for the town. And um, that, that's about the best I can say. And again, thank you for taking the time for this hearing. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Mr. President, um, that, that would be the end of our formal presentation. All of the witnesses and myself are available to answer any questions that the council might have.
You're muted, Kerry.
I'll get it still later. Uh, I've already had a half a dozen. I think I would learn by now. But anyway, I'm going to take this opportunity to uh, invite council members to ask any questions of yourself, the staff, or anybody who's given the presentation. I'm gonna start out this time by, with Councilwoman Bacon. This is her district. Uh, I'm gonna give you the opportunity to question, question. Councilman?
Kerry, I do have um, a question. I think I'm gonna ask this of um, our town attorney, Nick Gorham. Nick Otting, is Nick on here?
Yes, he is.
Oh, there he is. Nick, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Sorry about that, yes.
I'm noticing on here because it's a very, it's very tiny. But it appears the entrance way is between two homes and it appears to go through the towns right of way. Is that correct?
Could Mr. Bannon please put up the schematic so we can take a look at it? I know I saw that on the alternate plan. I'm not sure if, I just want to identify what you're talking about. Would that be helpful, Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So as I see it, there are two entrances and exits.
Yeah, there's an emergency on Reservoir, but right where it is Orchid, Regalwood and this main entrance.
Yeah.
Is that, because on the, the other one, it says it's town-owned property. Is that accurate on this one also? Because it seems to be the same location.
Where does it say?
It says it on our packet. It says town-owned right-of-way. It says it on both plans.
I don't see it on this plan.
It doesn't say it. It's very, very tiny. It's tiny, tiny print.
Let me get my agenda packet out. I'm going to...
If you look at the roadway itself, it says it right in the middle of the roadway.
Town-owned road undeveloped.
And it says R O, right-of-way. R O W.
Yeah, I see that. Town-owned road, town-owned right-of-way.
And it appears that it's going between two homes on Regalwood Drive. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, it looks correct, yeah. So...
That's an existing, that's an existing fifty-foot wide right-of-way that was platted in the past.
So, so...
I think in approving the project, the town would be assenting to the use of the right-of-way. Honestly, I have no knowledge whether that's a town-owned right-of-way. I do have knowledge that it is customary for a developer, that would be the person who developed perhaps the property on Orchid Trail and Regalwood, to have left access to the large, I think it's a sixty-two-acre parcel, if I'm not mistaken about the testimony. It would be customary, or typical, I should say, of a landowner to leave a right-of-way so that they can have access to their property. Whether it's town-owned or not, you know, that I do not know. I know it's on the map.
I'm thinking liability issue. If it's a right-of-way town-owned, you know, and now we're making this into a roadway, what's the liability issue for the town? If, say there was a minor car accident there, would that be on the town or would that be?
Well, it would probably...
And who would be responsible for just that right-of-way? Would it be the condo association or the town?
Well, I think the proposal, if I heard Mr. Cronin correctly, is that the condominium association will ultimately be responsible for the roads within the project, the planned unit development. I would assume that that includes this access road. And they would probably carry their own insurance. To say that that is a town-owned right-of-way right now, I don't have the, I don't have the ability to make that determination. But it would not surprise me if it was dedicated for future public use by the person who wanted to preserve access to that sixty-two-acre parcel. It's only natural to have done that because it's a big piece of property. It's on the water. They probably wanted to reserve the right to get access to it and develop it. That would be no surprise at all. So our liability would be the same, I would be safe to assume, same as on all other highways. We're insured for that type of thing with the inter-local risk management trust, as you know. I think the condominium association would also have some duties to maintain the highway as well. But it sounds to me like, at least from within the boundaries of the project, which I believe begins at the green area that's depicted, it would be exclusively their responsibility. That short stretch of about, it looks like about two-hundred feet from Regalwood Drive to the entrance. That's a very good question, but I think we have insurance for that. I think we probably should ask the planning board in its final determinations to examine and clarify who is going to have responsibility for that. I'd be surprised if the developer didn't want to take responsibility. It would just be simpler and easier for everybody, but that'll be up to them.
Okay, because I want to confirm that. So I guess my question is, why not go through Tallwoods Drive? Why not enter in and not use the towns right-of-way and go between two homes? Why not just go right down Tallwoods Drive right into the piece of property?
Yeah, is that a question for me or is that a question to Mr. Bannon?
To any of, maybe?
Mr. Gorham, can I respond?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, okay. So there is a, Tallwoods Drive is supposed to be another fifty-foot town-owned right-of-way platted street. However, through creation unknown, there is an encroachment in that fifty-foot right-of-way by the property owners on this picture to the top right.
Yeah, I know the house.
Yeah, so the, I don't want to mention anyone's name, Ms. Bacon. We all live in this neighborhood, but we don't want to name names, right? So that piece of property has intruded onto the fifty-foot right-of-way. And it's no longer fifty feet and it would no longer support a road constructed in conformance with the town standards. And that is why the other town-owned right-of-way platted public street has been chosen.
So can I ask a question?
Mr. Cronin, if I may. If Mr. Wazika could show the boundary survey plan that was submitted as part of this package that was prepared by Coventry Survey and blew up on that Tallwoods area, it could show more clearly exactly what we're talking about here.
I'm not sure that that...
Sheet six.
I'm not sure that that plan was submitted, Mr. Crossman. I'm not sure about that. I think if we just zoom in here, you could probably see it anyway, but...
May I ask a question, Mr. President?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Gorham.
Tom, so they've encroached on it, but I mean, how does that foreclose the use of the right-of-way? Are they making a claim for the property?
It's, Mr. Gorham, it's actually deeded land to them identified by survey and deed. If you looked on this picture where Tallwoods comes in and it meets the property line, there's a triangular piece of land belonging to that property owner which intrudes onto the fifty-foot right-of-way. It's not a physical disturbance. It's an actual deed and shows up on the deed and survey as entering that fifty-foot right-of-way.
May I, how does that happen?
I don't have, I don't know.
So, but they encroached on town-owned property. I just don't understand how this, how that happened. So we can't, the town can't just say, sorry, that's our property and we're going to allow this developer to be able to put his roadway through?
It was deeded to him.
It was deeded to the person claiming title to the property? Is that, someone said it was deeded to them.
It's in their property description, correct, Mr. Gorham?
In whose property description?
The homeowners.
All right, well, the only thing I would suggest is if it really does belong to the town and they're making an adverse possession claim, typically the sovereign, which the town of Coventry is a sovereign, is exempt from an adverse possession claim, just for what it's worth.
So, Mr. Gorham, it's not an actual use issue. It's a deed and survey issue. They own property which comes to an angle or a point in an area which you would project would be in the fifty-foot right-of-way platted to the town.
So whoever, so the right-of-way that was purportedly reserved for the town is in error, really, is what it comes down to, I guess. Or it's in conflict with...
There's a, that's a great way, that's a great way of putting it, Mr. Gorham. There's a conflict.
All right.
So anyway, that, that's the reason.
You're opting to use the other road. That's a preferable way of access for the development.
May I ask, how close is that roadway? Fifty, fifty, is it going to be fifty feet wide, you said?
The right-of-way is fifty-foot wide. The roadway is much smaller than that. I believe at planning, they had requested a twenty-six-foot-wide roadway up to the town standard with a sidewalk on one side up to our property line.
Okay, how close will that be to those two homes?
So, well, that would leave twenty-six, I'm no mathematician, but it would leave about twelve and a half feet on each side.
Twelve and a half feet. Can we...
Their property line.
To the property line, not to the dwelling.
Yeah, no, to the property line, yes. I just...
I have a question for Mr. Cronin. The right-of-way that's going to be used from Orchid and Regalwood into the property, that's been there for as long as those lots have been there, that, but either side of it, correct?
That's correct, it's part of the subdivision.
Paper street.
Yeah, and the people who bought that property and developed it and so on down the line, they always knew that there was a right of access to this sixty-two acres perched on Johnson's Pond. They knew that all along, right?
Well, it's a matter of record. I don't know about personal knowledge, but it is a matter of public record.
It's on public record, okay, understood.
And I'm assuming they've been notified of this public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. My next question would be for Mr. Bannon. When you did your traffic study, Mr. Bannon's still on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. When you did your traffic study, did you take into consideration the high school traffic in the morning when all the buses are coming in and in the afternoon when the buses are exiting the high school?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. We looked at those situations because the high school pretty much drives the peak hours in that area.
Okay, and you also took into consideration the industrial traffic from the industrial businesses that come out, especially in the peak hours?
Yes.
Okay, that was all taken into consideration?
Yes, it was.
Great, I don't know who to ask this question to next. Will this development have underground utilities?
Well, we, the plans of that type, of that specificity have not been developed and submitted yet. Typically, they would start off at the street level above ground and then go underground when it reaches our property has been the preference of the Coventry Planning Board. So they haven't reached this issue yet either, but let's just say that's the way that they have been requesting these projects move forward.
Mr. Assalon? Thank you very much. All our communities, almost from day one before it was required, have been underground. And we will keep with that concept. And I believe it might also be part of the requirements of the, I think the planning board may have already asked that. We acquiesce that it will definitely committed to be underground. Thank you.
Okay, and I have a question. I guess this would be for Nick again, regarding plan development and maybe Russ Crossman. Maybe you could answer. It says that these are floating zones composed of a variety of land uses, including mixed-use, commercial, industrial and multifamily projects that are created in conformance with Article fourteen of this ordinance. So I just want to make sure of that. So when this happens, this would be just the condos. We wouldn't see any type of industrial or any type of commercial going in there also, correct?
Correct. What that means is, Nick, if I may, if you don't mind. The underlying zone in this area is the R-20. The PUD that you are, would be creating here this evening is going to sit, they say it's going to sit on top of that zone. This council is dictating what that zone will consist of. If you were to seek, if you would have garnered a favorable opinion this evening of sixty-two units, that would be what the zone would be limited to, sixty-two units. Residential units.
That's what I just wanted to confirm.
The reason why it mentioned industrial is because you could do a PUD in an industrial zone or a GB zone.
Okay.
And, okay.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that I was reading it correctly, but thank you for clarifying.
Just to make it even simpler, what's in the proposal, that is the project. That's it.
Okay.
And so what you're looking at is the entire project.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, that's all. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bacon. The next person I'll go to is Vice President LaBossa there. Mr. LaBossa there?
Yeah, I had unmuted. Thank you, Mr. President. Really, just, I think it's a really nice-looking project. Just one question, what is the existing structure? Is that a home?
Right now, there's a small, single-family cottage, I would call it. None of those are scientific or legal terms, but it's a very small cottage-style home that is, I think, accessed from a driveway off Reservoir. That's what's there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, without any, Mr. LaBossa there?
Yes, I'm good. I want to hear what any folks have to say at the public hearing, so I'm all set.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaBossa there. Councilwoman, okay, Councilwoman Bacon, you have another question? Yeah, I'm mute.
Yes, I know, I'm sorry. Because Greg made me think about this. I do have a question for John Assalon.
I'm here, Deb.
Hey, John, are you going, I don't see anything on here for the condos. Are you going to do anything like a clubhouse at this location?
No, we usually keep away from that because it just adds to the HO fees. And, but we may have a, at that so-called cabin, which is heated, water, septic, we may use it for a card room, for gatherings, small gatherings. So it's kind of up in the air, but a clubhouse per se, day and night, no, not at all.
Okay, and are there any plans for any docks along the waterfront?
Yeah, that's going to be kind of up to DEM. There's not going to be a multitude of docks. We're talking about right now a dock with multiple spaces, but not for the entire community or a shared dock between two houses. That's, I have to say, that's up in the air right now, has to be discussed with the town, the planning board and DM. But yes, we do plan to have some docks there.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Mr. President? I've got one more. Actually...
Yours.
Just a quick question. Mr. Assalon, will the, they stated there was access to that cottage from Reservoir. Will that access be continued or will it continue?
No, the access to the, only the cottage will be continued to Reservoir. There'll be no traffic on Reservoir whatsoever emitting from the overall community. There's also a turnaround down there for the, maybe a school bus, but I know rubbish trucks turn around down there. Snowplows will let them turn around down there. So there'll always be that circular area, but not for traffic within the community.
Oh, but access to that cottage from the community will not be by vehicle? In other words, so they couldn't drive around and down Reservoir to get there?
No, absolutely, there's no traffic, we're not going to generate any traffic in Reservoir whatsoever.
Okay, great, so then all from inside the community?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, this time I'd like to ask Councilwoman Dixon, do you have any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you to all the witnesses who gave a complete description of their role and what kinds of reports they did prepare. I did visit the area twice, it's not in my district, but I knew this was an important proposal, so I did visit it and I talked to whomever I saw on the road or at their property to see what kind of concerns they may have, and no one indicated any kind of concerns. I did notice that some of the roads there, like Regalwood, etc., actually a little bit wider than some of our neighborhood roads, so I thought that was a good thing. I was concerned when I read the traffic report, because it's based on 2010 census data, which is like 10 years old, and some of the fiscal impacts are based on an estimation of how many students would be or children would be in the school system. So, I was concerned that the data for that was very old and not current at all, and I would like to see when we do other traffic studies, that if we're going to use data that's been collected in the past, that it'd be more recent than the one that was used. I don't know if there was anything more current. I did note that you did current traffic studies at, you know, certain corners to determine how many cars were passing in one way or the other, but I was concerned about the population study, so maybe you can tell me a little bit more about that.
That, the population study is based on census data of the community over decades. Every 10 years, you're required to grade, update that information. So, that was just a reference to annual growth rates in the community over decades of time. So, that was just an estimate, you know, an average growth rate of your community, so we could project to the future condition, because we look at today, and then we look at a build-out, which would be five years. So, we have to project what the base growth is, so we look at census data, historical census data, to see what your growth rates are.
You unmute.
Thank you for that clarity. As I said before, using 10-year-old census data to give an estimation for number of students, I felt was a little bit outdated, but I understand what you were saying. I'm also interested in knowing if all of the homeowners or the condo owners will have water rights, and will that be deeded into their agreement with the association? Who can answer that question, Mr. Assalon?
Yes, Councilwoman, thank you, and thank you for taking the time to go down there. We plan to allow all residents access on a, I don't want to say on a wide-open area, but if you're going to live in that community, you will have access to the water. That access would be restricted area, private area where the cottage is now. We intend to allow residents to put in a canoe, or a paddleboard, which is very popular these days. There'll not be storage down there as such, and you're not going to see any, I guess one of the best examples, and this is much smaller than Wood Estates, my father gave them an island. And that island has been managed very well by the residents of Wood Estates. It's never been overcrowded, it's never caused a problem on the lake, so you're talking about a minimal amount of people using the lake here. The direct access to the lake will be for those people that are, that elect to live on the so-called waterfront. That's the best I can tell you.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you for that information. I am concerned, Mrs. Bacon did ask a question about the dock. People who are living in that prime area, and you said the houses would sell for about $450,000, so it's going to be types of people who can afford motorboats, canoes, paddleboards, and ski-mobils and so on, not ski-mobils, but what do you call those things, I don't even know, jet skis in the water. And there are already complaints by people who live on Johnson's Pond, that there are too many boats on the water, there's too much wake, etc., and so I was concerned about the use of the water, which of course is a prime asset, but the use of the water and how much restriction you would make on docking. So, it appears that there will be a dock, but limited number of spaces, is that correct?
That's correct, and our suggestion was made by a member of the planning board that we're really considering. I don't want to be punished, though I want the residents to be punished for other idiots that are on the lake. You know, when you're in an association, there are pretty good covenants that people have to adhere to, and this would be part of the covenants within the condo association. Any docks we've talked about right now is, would be a dock that you do not have multiple units of boats and seadews and everything else on it. That's what we're looking at right now. So, but we do want them to have a reasonable access to the water, to reasonable boats. But again, we're going to work that out in the condo documents.
Thank you, Mr. Assalon.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Bacon, I'm going to give Councilman Cody an opportunity to ask any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate it. Mr. Assalon, I have to be honest with you, if I didn't feel as though we were dealing with such a reputable developer, I would have concern for Johnson's Pond and the aquifer that feeds into it from that area. But I know from looking at and examining a lot of your other developments, that that's not going to be an issue. And I appreciate the time and the effort that you put into protecting the public waterways that you have the privilege of building adjacent to. My question would be, are other residents in the area still going to have any access to the open space that will be maintained within this community that you're going to develop?
Thank you, Councilman Cody, it's pretty, probably a long answer. The most recent project we did was, with your cooperation, by the way, was River's Edge. And that has access to a couple of miles of the river. And the residents have access there for fishing, canoe, or kayaks. Extremely little use. The largest development we did on a waterway was Westwood Estates that were over 400 and plus homes. They had access to acreage, they had access to the river waterways. Extremely little activity on the waterways. But we never stopped anyone from the upper community of Kylie Way or Wood Estates North, people play tennis there. So, we kind of go along to get along, so it's kind of a long answer, we're not going to post it, no trespassing. It's a great, it's a great area, I think for biking, it's going to be a great, beautiful area, tremendous area for walking, and I have no intention of making it so-called sale. It will be part of the final decision of the people that live there, but even in River's Edge, the most recent community, people come in there before they go to the bike path, if they're on 117, they'll walk through River's Edge before they go to the bike path. So, we just kind of go along to get along, that's the best answer I can give you on it.
Okay, and I understand Councilwoman Dixon's concern when she says about the activity that's on the water. But I want to put everybody's mind at ease, I know a lot of people that live on Johnson's Pond, and if you talk to them, they'll be very happy to tell you that they don't think the problem exists with the residents of Johnson's Pond. The problem exists because on the weekend, there are public boat launches that you can pay, you can live out of town and you can pay to put your boat in the water, and you can use the pond at your leisure. And those are the people that, for the majority of it, are coming in and not respecting the rights of the property owners who live around the pond. So, I don't have any concerns with safety, or appreciation, or care for the water from this community. I had a concern about the way, the potential for impact on the school system, that's been explained. I understand that the census information that was used was 10 years old, but that was for historical value only, and to show the constant growth or decline in the town of Coventry. So, I think from listening to my fellow councilmen, listening to you as the developer, and the team that you put together to work on this project, I think all of my concerns have been answered and alleviated. And I just want to thank you and your team for your time, and appreciate your continued interest in developing in the town of Coventry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Cody.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilman Cody, yeah, a lot of the questions on myself that I've asked or concerns have been asked. And I do also appreciate the team you put together and to answer that, the formative presentation that you gave us. I know that Mr. Assalon, several developments in time, really nice developments, he's not one of them, kind of guys who will build and develop, interestingly, but he takes care of it, he does a good job, and I'm sure it'll be the same thing with this development. So, with that being said, I have no more questions, I think a motion to open public hearing would be in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion that we open public hearing, please.
We have a motion for public hearing, do we-
I have, I second the motion.
And we have all in favor, Madam Flip?
Mary McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBossa there?
Yes.
Deborah Bacon?
Yes.
Barry Cody?
Yes.
Ian Dixon?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Mr. Manager, do you have anybody from the public that would like to speak? You unmute.
At this time, no, but I just want to advise everyone, simply raise your hand, and in order, we will take you. When I unmute you, please state your name, your address, and then you go through with your question.
Yeah, give it a couple minutes, I'll give it a couple minutes.
We've got a couple, actually, and I'm going to open the first one up.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Juicy? Hello?
Sounds like we're having some technical difficulties.
You might want to tell Mr. Juicy that his mute button is on, as far as I can observe.
All right, it's off now, Mr. Juicy, are you there? One more time, Mr. Juicy?
Why don't we move on to the next person, and see if it's just a problem with him, or if it's a problem we have with our system?
I'm going to go with Ernest Iannatelli. Ernest?
Yes, yes, I'm here, I have three questions.
Please state your name, your address, sir.
My name is Ernest Iannatelli, I live at 4 Regalwood Drive. I have three questions. My first question is, you said the price of these condos will be somewhere around $450,000. What guarantee or do we have that that will be the selling prices of the homes to ensure that our property values here in the single-family, in the existing Wood Estates North, stay at their current rates?
Who would be able to answer that, Mr. Cronin, or Mr. Assalon?
I built a good part of Wood Estates North. And any home I ever built in there, never brought another home down. And I've never done that in any community. The price dictates what the market is. Besides the market, it's, the price dictates the cost of the development. Because of the space that we're setting aside, and because of the, we're paying for all the amenities regarding snow removal, lawn maintenance, etc., you just do not build a, I don't want to use the word cheap, but you don't cheapen a community like that, we've never done that. And I don't know what else I can tell you, other than saying, you're going to have to go by our history, and you live in part of our history. Wood Estates has held its own for many years, Wood Estates North has held its own for many years. The homes in Westwood Estates that some people frowned on are now up to a quarter of a million dollars, from $85,000 when I started there. So, best I can say is, I hope you trust us. I think you're looking at a minimum of $450,000.
I mean, yeah, I'm an engineer too, and I don't really trust anything but data. You're building two-bedroom condos, and most of the houses in the neighborhood are four-bedroom houses with, on average, two and a half to three baths. So, I'm a little concerned about the value, what the actual resale value of the condos will be, and if they'll potentially drop below that $400,000 range and bring down the property values for the rest of the neighborhood. So, I'd ask the council to take a hard look at that, and review the fact that, you know, they're two-bedroom condos, and the rest of the neighborhood is four-bedroom houses. My next question would be the traffic study. I heard a bunch of answers that you looked at Reservoir Avenue, you looked at the intersection between Clubhouse and Reservoir. What I didn't hear is you looked at the traffic study on Regalwood Drive itself, and the increase in traffic on Regalwood with having one entrance into the community, just a few houses up from where I live. And I'm asking the question as to why you're not opening up a second access. I understand the access on Tall Woods poses a deed issue. I'd ask the council to look into that as well. But I'm also wondering why you're not opening up access on Reservoir Road, which would alleviate some of the traffic down Regalwood Avenue, because the majority of the people that live in this in this community are going to come out of that access road, the proposed access road, take a left and drive down Regalwood for Reservoir. So, I'm asking why you wouldn't have a second access on Reservoir to split that traffic study in half, that would probably be something for Paul Bannon to answer. So, that's just another question that I'm asking, and looking for an answer, and wondering if the council has asked that very same question. So, I don't know who wants to try to answer that.
Mr. Bannon, would you be able to answer that?
Yes, I would. You're suggesting that there's one way in and out of this neighborhood, and that's not the case. You have Juniper Hills to Clubhouse would be a major point of access egress to the neighborhood also. So, there's very little traffic on Regalwood today, because there's only a few dozen homes in that area of the neighborhood, you're at the end of it. So, we will be adding traffic, it won't be, and there are many ways to get in and out of that neighborhood. There isn't just one point, and it depends where you're coming from, from the south, from the north, the time of day, how you would access the neighborhood. So, it won't be a concentration of traffic in front of your home, we don't anticipate that at all.
I'm not really concerned about it in front of my home, I'm more concerned about, you know, people are people, they're going to come out of the street, take the most direct to Reservoir. But you actually didn't answer my question as to why you're not having an access on Reservoir Road to split the traffic out of the neighborhood.
I think those questions were answered previously, that the access to Tall Woods is restricted. We don't have-
Tall Woods is, we understand that, that's a deed issue, and the town of Coventry will look into that, I'm sure. I'm referring to access off of Reservoir Road, where we discussed that there wouldn't be an access off of Reservoir Road. They gave no reason why there wouldn't be an access directly off of Reservoir Road to the community.
That would have to be asked for the site engineer, but I think the topography probably has, in wetlands, probably have impact on access. The local, and that's a much smaller road relative to its infrastructure, because it's a very old road versus subdivision roads that were built as part of Wood Estates that are- that were built as part of Wood Estates that are substantial relative to residential subdivisions with roadway width, curbing, sidewalks. So the existing neighborhoods, it's a much more conducive to additional traffic versus an older roadway that was accessed for waterfront, probably summer home properties. But I, Mr. Bean would probably get into alternative layouts of the property.
Yes, I could speak to the site itself. The grades between our Loop Road within the development down to Reservoir Road, it has a relatively steeper slope in that area. Is it possible to design something? Yes. Would it be attractive? No. We've looked at the vertical alignment of the road, and there'd be a significant portion, probably 200 feet, maybe 300 feet of that road, would be four to five feet above existing grade to make it work. So therefore, the road would have to be clear-cut wider. The trees would be cut much wider on each side of the road. So the, since the road's so high, it's got to taper down on the side, slope down to existing grade again. So aesthetically, it wouldn't be the best area. And functionally, it would be a steep slope road as well. We'd max out the road grade probably 8%, maybe even 9% to make it work. So it's not our first option, put it that way.
Thank you. I mean, aesthetically, that's, I'm more or less concerned about splitting the traffic through the neighborhood. Aesthetics, that's, I would ask the council to take a look at, you know, again, making it better for the neighborhood, and not so, you know, if it's an aesthetics thing, I think we could forego that and put a second, a second entrance there. And my last question is, and again, I would ask the council to look at that. Councilman Bacon, this is your area. If you'd vote for you. No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, take a look at that. And two entrances would be better than one. It would split the traffic, and it would allow to have less, less traffic in the neighborhood. And my last question is for Mr. Assalon himself. How can, are you guaranteeing that 62 units, and no more than 62 units, five years down the road, the open space that you're leaving, would you consider developing that in two to three years, or would that be left open?
Am I off mute?
Yes.
I would love to. No, I'm only kidding. Take it easy. Actually, the council rules on this. And no, I wouldn't want to make any more. And I've never, I've never approached the council or a town to expand something that we committed to in the beginning. But it's not my say on that, actually. That's going to be so-called cast in stone. You're not going to have 62 and a half or 63. You're going to have a maximum of 62. And to answer you, a part of, I think, part of your first question regarding values, we're really fortunate enough not to have to build out. And I think many of you might understand that. We're not under the gun that we have to produce a house to keep going. And we don't, we just don't have to do that. So I intend to build, I think the build-out here is going to probably be a little bit longer than normal, because there's no rush to it. And we'll probably do it in phases and just take our time. And so I don't, I don't see you getting hurt by the values there. And I think, and I hope, eventually, when some people go to sell their houses in Wood Estates North, they're going to be able to say, hey, you know, it's a great area here still. You can take a walk down on a trail and look at the water. I mean, I hope you get, eventually, you're more positive about it. But that's the best I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I'm not against it. I just wanted to get some of my questions answered. I thank all of you for answering my questions, and I would ask the council to consider some of the thoughts that I've brought to the table. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Wazika. Is there anybody else that is looking to speak?
We're going to attempt to do Mr. Juicy again.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Juicy?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Sorry about the mishap in the beginning.
No problem. Just state your name and your address for the council, please.
Absolutely. This is John Juicy III. I live at 9 Regalwood Drive. So first and foremost, I'd just like to thank the members of the council, and all of you that are involved in the Tall Woods Project. I appreciate the transparency and the information today. Few questions. The first one is regards to the buffer from the property line. I know I, you know, I'm being on Regalwood Drive. I do have rebutting property. And we're just curious as far as, is that an untouchable buffer? In other words, will that never be disturbed, or what is that going to look like?
Mr. Wazika, if I, would you show the map, which shows the distances from the proposed condominiums to the existing homes? Perhaps so give Mr. Juicy some information.
Yeah, I think it's 249 and 213, I think, roughly.
Oh, you've seen it. Okay.
I have. I'm just curious as far as the buffer itself, like, that won't be disturbed at any point in the future. Like, there won't be any work done, and I've got to cut down the trees. Like, that's a true undisturbed buffer. It is what it is, type of thing, or...
Well, Mr. Juicy, I would love to offer you that guarantee, but we have not been to the DEM.
Okay.
We have to abide by what they say with regard to drainage in particular.
Okay.
And keeping the runoff of the water on our property and not on adjoining properties, or in this case, maybe even the pond. You know, we have that duty to make sure there's no runoff off the property.
Okay.
And they, we propose things to them, but in the end, they decide where that water retention will take place that will retain any runoff on our property. So I guess I would say, and I feel confident in saying this, that we don't intend to, you know, denude the forest there or anything like that. But we might have to, you know, build some swales, for instance, or something like that, and then replant.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the answer there. My second question in regard to lighting. So is there going to be lighting as far as facing, you know, the direction of Tall Woods? And if so, is it going to be second-level lighting or just first level?
Mr. Bean, can you address that?
It sounds like this is lighting from the actual units being constructed?
No.
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
Okay. I would imagine this would be typical house construction. So there would be some lights at the front entrance, some lights in the back, if they have a porch or a patio.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have detailed specifications of the house drafted up yet. That would be the next step, preliminary plan.
Okay. All right. I mean, I guess I would request just maybe no secondary lighting, because I know sometimes that can shine in and maybe, you know, affect some of the, just the appearance. So if that, we'll take that consideration. But it sounds like that will be coming in the future, right?
Yes. The architectural plans will be developed by an architect, and we have not seen those. That's the next step.
Understood, understood. And do you know how long the project is estimated to take from start to finish? Is there going to be a timeline, or...
This is construction now?
That's for the construction, yes.
There's no timeline set yet. We still have a significant amount of permitting to get through to DEM, and then back to the planning board.
Okay. All right. Very good. Well, thank you so much for the time and the ability to answer, ask some of these questions. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Appreciate that. Mr. Wazika, do we have anybody else looking to speak?
At this point, we do not.
Okay. I think we've been on for a few minutes, and people have had the opportunity. So I personally want to thank everybody that was involved in this presentation tonight. It was informative, but I like being transparent to the taxpayers and the people. I think there were some good questions asked, some good points made. And certainly, we're way at the beginning of this procedure, and it's planning, and there's a lot of other steps that have to go. So I'm sure that, you know, everything that was taken, that was asked tonight would be taken into consideration, be it the planning board and a developer. So with that being said, I think a motion, oh, actually, a motion to close public hearing.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we close public hearing on this matter.
Okay. We have a motion to close public hearing. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clip?
Harry McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosnere?
Yes.
Deborah Bacon?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Barry Cody?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. Now, the chair, the chair will entertain a motion. I'm sorry. I thought I was muted. The chair will entertain a motion on this matter.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Okay. We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clip?
Harry McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosnere?
Yes.
Deborah Bacon? Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries to approve. The next thing, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
This public comment?
We did close public comment.
But no, that was public hearing. I believe there's public comment on the agenda?
Okay. Okay. We have public comment. That is the next one. Excuse me. Public comment. Is there anybody, Mr. Wazika, who would like to make public comment?
At this time, no one has their hand raised.
Okay. We've had plenty of time in this meeting, so I'm going to add for motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion we adjourn this meeting.
We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clip?
Harry McGee?
Yes.
Greg LaBosnere?
Yes.
Deborah Bacon?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Gary Cody?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned. Once again, I want to thank everybody for showing up in this meeting. Have a good night. Be safe.
Thank you to the council.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you very much. Good night.